Will the Aldermen please take their seats? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the 2019-2020 Board of Aldermen Budget Deliberations. Today is May 1st, 2019, and today we are here for the departmental presentation portion of the automatic budget process. But before we begin, will everyone please join me as we salute our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice in common.
Madam Secretary, will you please take the roll?
Alderman Anderson. Alderman Beatty.
Present.
Alderman Fortunati.
Here.
Alderman Gaynor.
Here.
Alderman Gorman. Alderman Genantasio. Alderman Golden.
Here.
Alderman Grant. Alderman Hardiman.
Here.
Alderman Smith. Alderman Sutton.
Here.
Alderman Tranquilly. Alderman Secarelli. Alderman Vitro.
Here.
Alderman Vitale. Ten present.
We have ten present. We do have a quorum. Thank you, Madam Secretary. I'd like to entertain a motion to come out of recess.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second to come out of recess. All in favor?
Aye.
Repose? We're out of recess. At this point, the first department organization on our agenda is Human Resources, page 41. Good evening, Tanya.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Can everyone hear me clearly? So I'll just go give a little overview of what we've been doing over the last year. As the Human Resources Department, we're responsible for recruiting, for health and wellness initiatives, and working with the City Attorney for Collective Bargaining and Labor Relations Matters. Over the last year, we have recruited for over 24 open positions, some key positions with a superintendent of wastewater, several clerk A positions, mechanics, sanitarian, nurses, custodians. We have reviewed over 706 applications in various methods through indeed, applications that have come through us, and we've performed various exams using oral examinations, performance exams, and a combination thereof. Currently, we are in the process of recruiting for the Bieberbrook Foreman Position, an IT Manager, Treasurer, Human Resources Generalist, a Chief Clerk in the Assessors' Office, and various positions in the Public Works Division. There are about 20 vacancies in Public Works. We have also been instrumental in the implementation system conversion into Munis. I'm sure you all have heard about the system. We have been in Phase Two of the conversion and working on the implementation of the HRS, the Human Resource Information System and Payroll System. On the collective bargaining front, we finalized all of the outstanding contract negotiations and collaborations with the City Attorney's Office. We processed eight grievances, participated in four MPP hearings, participated in 10 arbitration hearings, two unemployment hearings, and two CHRO hearings. On the wellness front, we have an award-winning program. We did receive an award this year again, but in the past, we'd received a gold award. Now, we received a platinum award for having a healthy and wellness initiatives with the city and our employees. We held our fifth annual Health and Wellness Fair, and with the assistance of Public Works and the Regulation Department, we were able to open a fitness center for our employees free of charge to encourage them to improve their healths and just be healthy employees. In terms of my budget overall, is staying neutral. There were two key lines in which we requested an increase. One was the medical and dental line, and that's where we pay for independent medical exam reviews. Normally, they run anywhere between $1,000 to $1,500 per exam, and we have to conduct those exams when we have employees who request a service-connected disability. Typically, the budget was at $5,000. Last year, it was reduced to $3,500. I'm requesting to bring it back to the $5,000. This year alone, we've had four independent medical exams for two employees, and we may have another one in the pipeline. The second line that I requested an increase was in the miscellaneous professional fees and services. That is the cost to pay for grievances to the state labor board. It used to be $25 fee, and the state increased the fee to $200. So we just want to make sure that we have the funds to cover that. And lastly, it's in my wages line that there is an increase. I will, Justin's going to assist me, passing an organizational chart. So currently, in the department, we have my position, a Human Resources Generalist, and a Benefit Specialist position. I'm requesting to bring on an entry-level position of an HR assistant. One of the key things that is going to occur with the conversion and system implementation, one of the reasons we're doing this, is because a lot of the standard operations of a Human Resources office have been disjointed, if you will. Some pieces were coming out of Finance Department, some pieces were coming out of MIS, some pieces were housed in HR. With the conversion and having the Human Resource Information System, that is going to be all managed out of Human Resources. So currently, any changes that are happening in the system, some pieces go into the Finance Department and they enter it in the system, some parts come into the HR Department and we enter into the system, and some are done by the MIS Department, IT Department. Best practices is that when we have a Human Resource Information System, all of that is done through the Human Resources Department. We manage that data. We enter all of the information into the system. So any new hires, any changes, any salary tables that need to be updated, those would be done through us. Any cost share, premium cost share changes would be through HR as well. We have that information. We're negotiating contracts. We have that data. We can enter it into system. And payroll, and now we are going to have an independent payroll unit, then processes payroll based on the information provided by Human Resources. So that's going to be a shift change. We're now departments contact Finance or MIS, or some pieces come to my office. It all is going to come through Human Resources. So my goal is to have an HR assistant that can not only assist myself, but assist the two professional-level positions within the department, so they're not tasked with putting together. Every time we have applicants, and as I mentioned, we reviewed over 700 applications this past year, we do send letters for anything, whether we're saying that you're qualified, you're not qualified, we're inviting you for an exam, here's your score. So all those letters come out of my office. My intent as the HR Generalist would do the professional work in terms of reviewing applications, assisting me in the testing piece, but when the letters are to be sent out, an assistant can be doing that. I wouldn't want a Generalist high-level position to be doing those entry-level clerical work. The same with the Benefits position. Part of that position is to serve as the Secretary to the Pension Board. Every month, we have to put together a pension packet. I believe there are about 39, 40 packets that are put together. So what my intent is that the HR assistant would help the Benefit Specialist who puts together that agenda with all of the supporting documentation, and the assistant would be the person making those 40 copies and putting them in envelopes and sending them out. And I can have my Benefit Specialist working on higher-level work, which is going to be required as of Munis, because now we will be managing that data. And so I have put that position at the same level as a Clerk A position, which is the entry-level position that we have in the city with other bargaining units. This position would be in the City Hall Union, because the positions within my office and City Attorney's Office are part of that bargaining unit. So with that, I open it for questions.
Any question? Alderman Gorman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. First of all, congratulations on the Wellness Committee Award that you've got for the second year and...
Third.
Third year, sorry. And also the Fitness Center opening up. I think that's huge. I know that was in the works for a long time. And also, what's five years for the Health and Wellness Fair? So you have some really good things going on. I guess I don't really have a question yet. So I just want to compliment you on those three things. Three thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Alderman Beatty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson, through you. Thank you, Tanya. And I think it's, if not the word unusual, but uncommon to have a HR director who's held in such regard and liked besides the contribution that you make, so thank you. But I have a question. I have notes from last year that two particular departments were influenced in terms of hiring. Peter, in the Finance and Public Works Department, Director Saly, talked about backlog in HR because of not having enough resources. I assume, and it sounds good, that this will true you up so that, and there was one other, the Health Department, the sanitation engineer, that those essential hires were, you know, cumbersome a little bit because of the work that you do and the workload. Will this fix that?
This will certainly will be a great addition to the team, and that will assist in that absolutely, because that assistant will be supporting the HR Generalists, and as applicants come in, they'll be assisting in reviewing. Letters can go out quicker, and things will be expedited certainly.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Good evening, Tanya.
Good evening.
The position is an Assistant HR Individual, right?
Yes.
And the minimum salary, is that the 51, 914?
No, the minimum salary would be the 39, 227.
39, 227. Okay. Is there an existing, or is there a written scope or position as to the duties of that particular position?
This would be a brand-new classification, so I do, and I apologize, I didn't bring the draft of the job description, but it would be a new classification that we would, if the board were to approve it, then we would go to Civil Service to approve the new classification and the job description. But I can certainly provide that.
Is there a possibility that we can see the job description?
Sure.
And that takes me to the next question. And I know we have a rush on filling positions in the 20 positions in Public Works, but I thought he had indicated the fact that we did some trade-offs, and he wasn't going to hire 20 positions because he got one or two, as I remember. Maybe I'm not clear on that situation, but because there's a rush, and because there's a, you know, in every job, there's a lull, you know? You get beyond that hiring of the 20 positions and the, as the, you indicated, one kind of thing was to put an agenda together and mailing it out. So I guess what I'm asking is that within that, within your department, there can't be a sharing of responsibilities and adding a little bit to each of everyone to save a few bucks?
Well, I can say that since I've been here, we certainly have increased the workload for both of the positions that I have in my office. A lot of the initiatives that I've brought on, the HR Generalist has taken on those duties and responsibilities. The Benefit Specialist initially was just a pension administrator position that simply worked on the pension piece. Since I came on board, I redefined that position to be a Benefit Specialist, and not only does that position support over 750 retirees and the Pension Board, but now they're handling the retiree benefits, so all of the administration, the life insurance, and processing payments for all of that. That was not part of the position when I initially was hired. Then we did a reorg that this body approved, and that was one of the things. We did beef up that job significantly. As I mentioned with Munis, the structure going forward is that a lot of the work that was, some pieces were housed in Finance, and some pieces were housed in IT, are just going to be funneled through my office. So that's permanent work that is coming to our office.
So that, what I'm hearing is that maybe not all that permanent work is going to be put on this individual, or is all that work going to be put on this individual?
It'll be shared, yes. It'll be shared.
Because it sounds like a, quite a description, job description for a $39,000 position. And we always know that positions change as they're more fluid than we want to realize. I have another question or follow-up on operational expenses. 534712, training expenses for $2,000. What training? Could you just elaborate on that?
We usually will either have people in the staff go to training. I myself have the, through the Society of Human Resource Management, SHRM, I have a certification as a Senior Certified Professional, and I take, I participate in trainings so I can maintain my credits, my CU credits for maintaining my certification.
Thank you.
Alderman Gorman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. And just following up on Alderman Vitale here, so my question is, with Munis, I would assume that the system would make things much more efficient, and we can do away with some staff, hopefully eventually, but you're sounding like we're adding staff to manage the Munis system, which, if you can explain...
I think in the long term, through attrition, we may be able to do that certainly. As the system is coming on new, there are a lot of system changes and things that we have not done, because the current system that's about over 30 years old was not able to handle. So certainly, there's a lot more functionality, and the system has a lot more capability, but with that, you also need people to be able to manage that data, to be able to, so we can utilize that data to make informed decisions. But I think in time, one thing, once things settle, then, and we can have the system in place, and everything is functioning as we need, certainly in some areas, we can look at that.
So just to follow, Mr. Chairman, so this would be more of a temporary position?
The position that I'm asking for?
Yes.
No, it's a permanent position.
And just one more follow-up. So you're saying you're taking over some responsibilities from IT and whatever other department?
And Finance.
Finance. So they'll have some reduction in their areas as far as services or whatever? Maybe Peter can elaborate on that.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Gorman. I would hesitate to describe it as a reduction. Yes, it is, it is work that's been disjointed, and over 30 years, pieces have been in accounting, if you will, and as payroll and human resource processes have evolved over these past, I'll say, 30 years, they've become much more complex. There's much more data involved. If you look at our benefits and our bargaining unit contracts, the nature of the work has evolved over the years. You look at it too, that the system itself, we talked last week how it's state-of-the-art, you have to have people that are able to spend time learning the system, mastering it, to be able to use it. Otherwise, the system is great, but if you don't have the people in place to use it, then the functionality, then the reporting, then the ability to use and process the data is not being fully utilized. One analogy that came to mind is, if you look at cars over the years, the engines themselves, the technicians used to maintain those cars, they've had to increase their skills, and dealerships have had to add people perhaps to be able to use the computer systems that are in cars today. So, I mean, it may be not an exact analogy, but that's one thing that came to my mind is, the more we see the system and what it entails, what it can do, we are finding that we need a position like this in Human Resources so that we can really use the system to its full extent. Thank you.
And I may add, one of the things that we are doing new with the system that we haven't done in the past, and is part of Peter's area, is that we will be using position control. So for every position that is budgeted, there is a position number assigned, and that is correlated to a person, and eventually, as Peter starts working with the budgeting module and producing these books, he will be able to have data to know exactly to the penny what was spent in each division, in each position, and so forth. And those are things that we didn't have before, but in order to manage them, we do need people that can utilize the system to manage that data within the system.
Thank you.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tanya, just, as I said before, that if in the line staff, where you're the HR Director, and there's an HR Assistant, then it goes into, and the other two, which are the Generalists in the Compensation Benefits and so forth, and they are directly under you, and the HR is directly under you, is there any supervisory responsibilities with either yourself or the Assistant as awareness, and just as a department?
Yes, I am the supervisor for the department. The two professional people work under my direction, as will the HR Assistant. The HR Assistant will also be supporting those two roles.
Or is that, is that position, does that do any, are they supervising any of the people at all? Is that, will that one position, HR Assistant, will she, is it, you didn't hire anybody yet, right?
No.
Will that person be supervising?
The HR Assistant, no.
Okay, it just seems odd in a line staff organization that the Director has an Assistant that makes much less than the others in that department, that's all.
Because it's more as an administrative assistant, not a Assistant HR Director. That's where this role is more...
Well, again, it's misleading then. It says HR Assistant, and it does, it's not the Assistant to the Director, it's just in a...
In the industry, that's the title that is used. An entry-level position is an HR Assistant.
Thank you.
Any more questions regarding the HR Department? Seeing none, I will go on to the Pensions and Retirement Board. Anyone having any questions regarding the Pension and Retirement Board? Alderman Gorman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So I don't know if this goes to the mayor, or, Mayor, we're interviewing for an investment advisor for our pension fund, is that correct? And where do we stand with that?
Mr. Chairman, through you, to Alderman Gorman. I know that they're, the Pension Board put out an RFP, Request for Proposals, sorry, I'm sorry, an RFQ, Request for Quotes. Probably, Tanya Barnes is the best position to talk about this. I do know that they're in the interview process presently. I don't believe that they have, well, I believe that they're in the interview process presently.
Yes, in April, they held a special meeting on April 24th, and they interviewed three of the five finalists that were brought back. On the 26th, they held their normal meeting that was postponed by a week due to spring break and so forth, and they interviewed the other two finalists. The Board has requested that they have the ability to submit any final questions to any particular advisor. They are going to be submitting those questions to our office, so we can then send them to the third-party consultant that was hired to support the Board, Hooker and Holcomb, and they will be submitting those questions to those advisors, so they can have responses to the Board before the next meeting, which is on May 17th, I believe. It's the third Thursday of the month, which I believe they will be reviewing all of their analysis and deliberating. There was also discussion, they may bring back two of those five finalists, but it wasn't certain whether they're going to be satisfied just with the responses and making a decision on Thursday, or if they're going to bring two finalists back. But they're nearing the end of the process.
Thank you.
Any more questions regarding the Pension and Retirement Board? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Civil Service Commission, page 31. Anyone having any questions regarding the Civil Service Commission? Seeing none, thank you, Tanya, for all your, for answering all our questions, and Peter as well.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Very welcome. You have good evening. The next department on our agenda is Bridges Community Healthcare, page 89.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Board members, it's our pleasure to be here before you. My name is John Dixon. I'm the President and CEO of Bridges Healthcare. Next to me is Carlos Rodriguez, our Director of Fiscal Services. We're both new to this process, so if we're out of line or awkward in any way, we'll take the rap for that. Just want to say thank you for your ongoing funding of Bridges. It's been instrumental in terms of the growth and sustainability of our programs. As you all probably well know, Bridges has been an active member of this community for 62 years. Basically, in the last fiscal year, Bridges has touched approximately 9,000 lives through its treatment and prevention services. In terms of our treatment services, last year, we served over 2,000 folks, with 77% of them coming from the Milford community. In the past year, we've had a number of successes at Bridges, including we became Joint Commission Accredited, which validates the work we do and puts us in a place where we are more competitive in terms of going after grants and other resources. We've implemented a new electronic health record, which brings us up to state-of-the-art work. work, and we're able to now look at outcomes and track how programs are doing in real time. And lastly, we've had a transition in leadership, which has got me here, and in my brief period of time here, I've been very much inspired by the sense of community here in Milford. Last and most interesting, in the past year, we have initiated a mobile medicated assisted treatment program here in Milford, getting at the devastation that opioid abuse has done to this community, as well as across the country. We are now bringing services to people rather than expecting people to come to our clinic, so we're very excited about that. We have some potential grants in the making to be able to expand that further and serve more people. This next year coming up is one of many challenges, as I think I need to explain what's going on with the state budget. During the course of the last year, we received a 5% cut from our primary funder, which is the Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services. We very much rely on the funds that you and other organizations share with us, and during the course of this year, we're really looking very hard at what are our core services? How do we do better at our core services? How do we create strategic alliances, become better partners with other community agencies in the city itself to try to overcome some of those challenges that we're going to have at the state level?
Thank you for that presentation. Does anybody have any questions? Alderman-Vitali.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Carlos and John. I know our van, the van at Bridges is doing well, it's in the community, and it's shared within the community. And I know that the mantra, the new mantra is regionalization, whether it be talk about regionalization in education, whether it's talked about, in many years, it's been talked about the mental health field, regionalizing and getting... So have you had any of this happen to Bridges as far as creating a positive effect on the financial running of Bridges? And if it has, can you elaborate on any of the regionalizations that you've had?
In particular, Mr. Vitali, we are the lead mental health agency regarded for Demus for Milford, Orange, and West Haven. We share that responsibility with two organizations for the rest of what's considered our region. The Connecticut Mental Health Center provides services to New Haven and Hamden, while BH Care provides services to the surrounding towns of New Haven. During the course of this past year, we are working much more closely with BH Care to be far more competitive in terms of going after both state and federal grants. So we're looking to create partnerships and work with them more closely, as well as anyone else we can. Does that answer your question?
I think so. So we're getting into the realm of regionalization and sharing a lot more than we had in the past years, anyway, with the concern being we have to get the biggest bang for our buck as far as the mental health situation is concerning. What bothers me is another issue, and I don't know if it's too early to talk about it, I know we talk about the onslaught of mental illness and how it exacerbates by community, what happens in the communities as it relates to individuals. But you know as well as I do that at the state level, there's a bill with the legalization of recreational marijuana coming forth and going to be voted on, and I wonder how, if you can talk to that issue and how it might impact Bridges and the community as far as other toxic substance coming into the state and how it's going to affect services?
As folks are likely aware, we are part of a partnership with the City of Milford, the Milford Public School System, and ourselves regarding the Milford Prevention Council. So we are very active in terms of looking at and providing prevention services. And I think in particular, the issue there is the infestation in the schools of products, like Juul and other types of products that are getting kids addicted to nicotine at an earlier and earlier age. In terms of the legislation to legalize marijuana, some of my history has been working with juvenile justice youth and trying to work with them to understand how it negatively impacts their life, not necessarily that, you know, it's the worst thing in the world, but at the same time, has it interfered with their schooling? Has it interfered with who they're hanging out with? Has it led them to some sort of criminal activity? So I think there's a lot of concern I would have about expanding access to marijuana. And certainly, we would want to come together as a community and develop, if legislation does go in that direction, make sure that we all work together to create as safe a place both in schools and throughout the community as possible.
Thank you.
Alderman-Fortunati.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Mr. Dixon. The Matt's van is a really exciting and innovative approach to dealing with the opioid epidemic. Can you go into a little bit more detail how it works, how Milford is served, where the van is parked, how they handle patients or patrons?
Sure. The van, we were able to launch the van during this year because of some end-of-the-year funding that was available made through the Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services. So with that rather small amount of money, we were able to purchase the van, get it licensed by the Department of Public Health, and be able to expand our medical director's hours and hire a consumer or peer who can work on that van. So what we've been able to do in this period of time, and for the next year and a half, well, three quarters at this point, is we're in the Milford community one day a week, and we're parked at the Bethel Shelter. Our medical director, who is a strong proponent of this approach, is actually on the van and would treat people should they seek help or seek assistance or seek treatment. And in addition, we have a peer coach, peer recovery coach, who is a person with lived experience, who really should be here talking instead of me. He's really extremely articulate, is able to engage with folks, and even the work they've done at this point has been really rather remarkable in terms of being able to reach out, engage the community, making people feel comfortable, come to the van, receive services. And I think that's it in a nutshell. You know, people are able to, if they show up and they're in withdrawal, they're able to start receiving treatment right then and there. We do a prescription, we get the Suboxone right from likely our pharmacy here on our campus, and somebody can start right then and there.
And how long has it been active using the van?
Today is the one-month anniversary. Happy birthday.
Well, it's wonderful. Congratulations on that.
Yeah.
Alderman-Gainer.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Could you please give us an update on the Room 4 program or the facility on the, I think it's the Post Road, it was the teen center? Is that still functional, and how many people utilize that?
I don't have the specific numbers, but I would be certainly glad to get those to you. Room 4 does continue to function, both in terms of a safe place for young adult, well, not, mostly kids to hang out. And also, we do a number of different programs there to address the needs of the kids, including we do the Smart Recovery Program, which is focused on substance abuse, and then do a number of life skills and interventions as well. But I could gladly get you those numbers.
Any more questions regarding Bridges Community Healthcare? Seeing none, I will move on to the Regional Mental Health Board?
Thank you.
Page 88. Are you not taking care of that? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Anyone here regarding the Regional Mental Health Board?
Mr. Chairman, that's a formulary grant per capita. Happy to answer any questions. Again, it's remained the same for at least the last eight years.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anyone have any questions regarding the Regional Mental Health Board? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Fire Department, page 51. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening. If I may, if, actually, Chief Baker, Chief Bagley, and Chief Wazner with me, I'm Chief Edo. Thanks for having us. What I would like to do, if we could, if we can work backwards and go to the last page, page 53, I'd like to go through each section, and then once we get to the wage section, I think we'll have more discussion on that. So pretty much, the budget, again, will be flat this year, maybe 2%. We went in and asked for a little bit more. But as I said, I'll explain more when we get into the personal services account. But if you look at the capital outlay section there, it's an increase of about $40,000. We have some vehicle issues, so we want to get a car. You'll see that communications equipment's up, that's outfit the car. EMS, we did ask for some money there, but it remained the same. So there's really not much in that one, in that account. Operational, it's the next account coming up, operational expenses, and you'll see there that that is pretty much a flat. Actually, it might have even gone down a little bit from, it did, from the previous budget of the 385 down to 373. It went down about 10 grand. The next one, above on page 52, the top, is property upkeep, and that pretty much stayed flat also. So if we go back to the original page 51, vehicle equipment upkeep, it's maybe a $2,000 increase. So again, we stayed flat there. Fringe benefits, that stayed exactly the same also, that's flat. We do ask for more money in the educational supplements because of some of the different stipends that we pay out to the individuals and college credits, fire marshal credits, and stuff like that. See? Pretty much stayed flat, year in and year out, for the operational side. And again, we always say how the, you know, our budget, it's mostly contractual. It could be up to 90, 95% of this is contractual stuff. And in particular, when we get to these wage accounts, the personal services, you'll see that it's almost an $11 million budget. Now, we have a $12 million budget, 11 million is just payroll. So that other million, you have to buy gear, you have to buy helmets, hoods, jackets, boots, pants, gloves, just the outfit, the firefighters, you got to buy air packs, you got to buy masks. We have uniform allowances, we have the uniform cleaning, we have to maintain the fleet, we have to buy tires. All this, computers, the licensing, that's always a killer for the IT side, and fixing the apparatus, buying the tires, as I said. So that eats up the other million dollars. So we have, you know, $2 left for a cup of coffee at Starbucks, that's about it. What I would like to say on the wages tonight is, if you look at the regular wages, when we took over this new administration, it was 2014-15 budget, was the first that we got involved in. The budget was set when we were appointed. And I just want to go through, I don't know if you have the history of that in front of you, I know you have just maybe the last year or two. But in the 15 year, we had, for regular wages, I'm just talking those now, it was 8.3 million. The following year, for 16, it went down to 8 million. The 16-17 budget, it went back to 8.1, but in that 16 year, was the state crisis in the budget. No one was sure what we had, so we went to a 2, 3, and a 5 minus budget. Ultimately, we ended up with a 2% decrease in the budget for that year, but it stayed at 1.8. 2017-18, again, it tried to stay at the 8.1, but at that point, I think I said that, and here's my point to all this, through all this are contractual wages. So in these five years, there's contractual pay raises, 2.5% each year. Well, they're not getting compounded, and they're not even in here. As I just showed you, we're less, less, and less. And I believe I explained that, I might have mentioned it. In that year, this board, most of you, increased our pay raise, wages, regular wages, $550,000. Because what we were telling you is that we were short, we're short paying our employees because of the contractual wages. 18, 19, two and a half percent raise on the money that you gave us, the 8.55, and now we're up to 8,750,000. So it's working. We got the pay raises that we're supposed to get contractually, including this year. This year, we went up, I believe it's another two and a half percent. There was a 2.8 in there too, but... So the two and a half for this year, and you'll see that for the regular wages, we're at 8,975. True math, it's a little bit short, it's about 12,000 short for the regular wages. And I get it that when some employees retire, and we're hiring at the lower level, we're not paying the top firefighters that money, we're paying at the lower level. So I can understand that a little bit, but the bottom line, I believe, we're caught up, close, relatively close. However, in the other accounts here, and you see the word overtime all the time, we don't get overtime. If somebody's not at work, they're paid, and I'll tell you, I have a bunch of people out injured and sick. If they're out, they're still getting their pay, and firefighter bill is going to cover that spot. So he's only working extra hours. He works a 42-hour work week, we work 42-hour work week, but if he picks up an extra shift, whether it be 6, 12, or 24 hours, he's just getting paid for those hours. It's not overtime, it's not time and a half, call it overtime. The only true overtime account is the one that says overtime regular. An example of that is, we just had two lieutenants, two firefighters promoted to lieutenant. They both drove the ladder truck. Well, above and beyond who's working, nobody could drive the ladder truck on that shift because he's now a lieutenant, so we have to hire a person. That would be a true overtime, that person now driving the fire truck because the two firefighters were promoted to lieutenant. And having said that, you'll see that we were always a little bit low in holiday account and vacation and relief. And in particular, if you look at vacation relief, it's 650,000, and it's been that for four years or more. And we go and ask for money. Same thing with the holidays, Dennis. There are 13 holidays times 12, 100 firefighters, you're looking at, you know, 1,300 days, $400 a day, it's like 600,000, and we're only at 650. The vacation relief does that too. What's happening here is that we're not getting those pay raises in these accounts, so we're not adding the two... accounts, so we're not adding the two, two and a half percent, but it is a dollar amount, it is getting paid. And, and the only way I think I can maybe explain is, like, five years ago, let's say, the firefighter was making thirty dollars an hour, but if you go, almost, it's fourteen point nine percent, it's almost fifteen percent from that thirty dollars, you know, he's, he's making, I don't know, thirty-six, thirty-seven dollars an hour. That's what we're paying him for those vacation days, that's what we're paying for the sick days, that's what we're paying for holiday pay. But none of that money gets increased. So, if, if, if you could help us out, we could use a little more money in some of these contractual wage accounts, not just the regular wage accounts. Again, you know, a lot of departments will say, yeah, it's contractual. It is, there's, there's staffing, there's, there's people. We had, at one point, we had thirteen firefighters off injured or sick. As of today, I checked, today we're down to seven. Two of them significant injuries or illnesses. Well, you know, I'm going to say four, two, two sick, two with another injury. We have meniscus tears, rotator cuffs, very popular, that's, that's probably because of age. We had two firefighters at fires tear their Achilles tendons. This is eight months of rehab and putting them back together, and they're on the payroll, but we're paying for that position whenever that firefighter's working. So, we're paying them. It's called overtime, vacation relief.
Mr. Chairman, I don't mean to cut you off, Chief.
I, I think I'm almost done. That's it, I'm done. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, to the board, there has been one recent labor decision which is going to affect the personnel. Peter and I will have an adjusted budget schedule for you, but I don't know if the chief wants to touch briefly on that, about how that's going to affect some of the personnel line items.
Well, sure, we, we, the repair shop has closed through retirements, so we're outsourcing the work for the trucks, it's working out well. And through negotiations, because we have to negotiate the impact with the union, we settled on agreement where we actually reduced the manpower for the fire department by one person, and we increased an unsupervised apparatus with four lieutenants. So, with the money from one of the retirements, we just took part of it and paid four firefighters' lieutenants to be supervisors on this apparatus, eliminating that job. And then one other job at the shop was just slid over to a, a fire inspector, which is another great thing, because as, you know, we've increased, we have a fee schedule now, so we've been making some decent money through the fire marshal's office, and that'll increase now with one more person, and that'll get us closer to the, getting to target hazards that we need to be addressing out there, and as far as inspections, the multifamilies that we, we haven't been getting to.
So, there will be a new budget book page that's distributed to the board prior to the final budget vote, so you'll have a chance to take a look at it and see the, the adjustments.
Yeah. And, and, yeah, and that, those pages, that would be page fifty-four, fifty-five, where it just lists everybody in the, in there. If you, if you, if you count it up, if you added all the firefighters there, I believe there's seventy-six of them, and now there'll be seventy-two. That's all that is. Again, back to the wages, it's, it's hourly, it's, it's hourly money that we're talking about here, that, that just doesn't seem to get covered in, in those accounts. If there's any questions, if I can answer them, or I'm sure Gary and Danny.
Any questions regarding the fire department? Alden Beatty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson. Through you to Chief Edo, thank you, Chief. It goes without saying how important you are to the city. I say that not from a personal point of view, every member of this board and the administration understands the contribution. I need, I have a question. Usually, we do not get into the weeds and the specifics, or the, the items in a way, but the cut of the twenty thousand dollars to the EMS, ninety percent of the budget is labor and wages, and the other ten percent is operations. And of that, the, if I'm reading it correctly, you asked for twenty-six nine and got five, so it's missing almost twenty-two thousand, twenty-one nine. So, I was thinking from a public safety point of view, EMS is, is that masks and gloves and, you know, protection for the first responders, and, and that, that seems like a very small amount in the city's budget, a pittance in a way, but a very large amount when it's a line item, an EMS. It couldn't be, am, am I right to anticipate that that's a hardship?
Well, just the cost of the supplies, as you know, in healthcare, just keep, keep going up and up and up. I'll have Chief Wosner speak on that, he's EMS officer. One thing though, if, if you look on page fifty-one.
I may be reading it.
The little asterisk there, on the bottom, it says, somebody, it says account, they had the specific account, but actually, it's, it's multiple accounts that we actually would supplement through the EMS billing system that, that we're currently doing. Did Danny have anything?
I'm not quite sure I understand the question entirely.
It seems to me that the, the cut, and the only thing that can be cut in operations, other than labor and contra, in that ten percent that's operations, is an EMS. Yeah, what's the impact? What's the impact of that?
So, I think it was last year or the year before, the board made a resolution from the EMS revenue, that we were able to get a small percentage of that into a special expense account. And so, because of that, we were able to get some of the EMS supplies and some of the equipment from that account. So, in, in all fairness and good faith budgeting, we figured we can actually reduce that a little bit, based on the amount of times we're having for an increase. We thought that was fair to be able to ask for.
Thank you. That explains it, and because I was thinking, I know the mayor is a fair person, and we had that discussion, you're talking Nelson and the transport and creating a revenue stream. So, that's, that's helpful, so that, so it's not a, a real threat to public safety because you moved it from another area. Okay. It looks here startling, you know.
Yes, so what we, what we essentially did was, the, the funds that we used to, to run the ambulance operation, the paramedics, and the, in the actual ambulance operation, we used the EMS revenue account for the supplies and equipment, and the money we left in the fire department budget was for the first responders. So, for the fire engines, the EMTs that do the first responder stuff, so the AEDs and the basic supplies, we kept in the fire department budget, because essentially, they're two different operations.
Well, thank you, and that brings me to my second point. And that was helpful, because you, you outlined that for us, and I think we all understood that, and knew what was going to happen, and why the change, and, and that you could capitalize on that opportunity for the initial small revenue stream, which may grow. But that's because you shared a little bit with the strategic thinking, Chief Edo. So, in here now, for the next time, it just looks like the, the labor and management contracts, and what it takes you when you're running the department efficiently, that there's nothing else. Is there something else in the works for the fire department, other than staggered big apparatus purchases, or, you know, a new plan, so we can understand the budget going forward?
I can't hear you.
I can't hear you.
I can't hear you at all, so I'm saying, I ask apologies, I, I can't hear what, what are you asking, I'm sorry.
I'm wondering if there, besides labor and management, the, the split that we see, most of it is labor and management, and the rest, an operational budget that's well managed, is there anything else strategically that's coming up for the department in the future as requests, big items, other than staggered apparatus?
I don't, I don't foresee anything at this point.
Okay.
No. We're only three years into this, into this new venture, so I think, I believe that, at this point, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Alden Germin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, through the chiefs. First of all, thank you for all your great service that you guys do every year. Now, Chief Edo, you were talking about how many people are out, either sick or injured? What was that number? Did you give a number out of?
As of today, there are seven that are out on injury right now.
Okay. And that's about average, or you said there's more, like thirteen on average that are out?
No, that, that thirteen, fourteen that we had, that was, that was pretty high. I, I don't want to say that, and I hope that it never is the average, it seems like quite a bit of injuries.
Okay.
But it's, it's inevitable that, you know, a lot of these, a lot of these are on the job, they, they get hurt doing the job.
Would those people be on workman's comp?
Yes.
And why wouldn't that reflect in your budget, or that's in a different?
Ones that are.
And why isn't that on your budget? Is that in a different budget, workman's comp? Because there's zero dollars on workman's comp here.
Yeah, we don't handle the workers' comp.
So, that wouldn't be part of your budget, even though it comes out of your department? Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, through you to Alden Germin, just to clarify, there is a portion that is part of their budget. If firefighter or employees out on comp, there's a portion that gets charged to the workers' compensation fund, but there's also a portion that gets charged to their operational wages. And then what we do at the end of the year is, we transfer the applicable amount of money from regular wages into that workers' comp line item at the end of the year.
Thank you. And then one last question, sorry, Mr. Chairman. Is there an age limit for firefighters, that you kind of boot them up?
There is not.
There is not?
There's no age limit. No.
Thank you.
Alden Vecarelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Chief, and all you other chiefs. I would like to thank you for the job, the good job that you guys do for our community. It's always nice to see you guys coming. You're always there to help us, you know, so it's, it brings a smile to your face. I, I just wanted to go over some real simple figures here. You have a little, little better than a twelve million dollar budget, and the total increase this year is about two hundred and thirty-seven thousand. And out of that, it looks like about two hundred and seven thousand is contractual for wages. It leaves us with a difference of about thirty-one thousand dollars. And, you know, I, I look at this, for, you guys always seem to come in bare bones, and really appreciate it, you know, we're able to keep our taxes down, and, but I would like to commend you for a, for a twelve million dollar budget to come here and say that, basically, besides our contractual agreements, there, there's a thirty thousand dollar increase. And that's, that's pretty outstanding. And what kind, what kind of bothers me a little bit is, I, I look at a couple of things here, whereas the EMS equipment, I know you've asked for an increase of, of money in that line item, five eight, five, two, seven, four EMS equipment under capital outlay. Could you give me a little insight? The, the mayor and the finance board have only recommended five thousand, you've asked for like twenty-six thousand, nine hundred. Could you fill me in on that one?
Yeah, I believe you did last time, we just, didn't we just, we just talked about twenty-six nine?
Right, so, we've kind of gone back and forth between the, the capital expenses of what we've been doing. The two major things that, for EMS equipment that we purchased are the, the cardiac monitors, and then the new stretcher systems for the ambulance. And if, if you've ever had the chance to see them, they're pretty amazing, they pretty much load themselves, but in the long term, they're going to cut down on back injuries, knee injuries, shoulder injuries, and that kind of stuff. So, you'll see a, a return on that investment. This year, what we're putting in for was another life pack machine, another monitor. Our monitors are, the model that we have are going up to thirteen years old, so that for any sort of technology is pretty, pretty outdated. So, we're looking to replace our oldest monitor with a new one. So, that's, that's the reason for the, the request, and then, I don't even know if I was aware that there was a different recommendation.
So, would it be fair to say that that line item there is, the increase was basically to try to update the monitors?
Yes.
And how many?
Just one. We, we have, we have eleven of them, because every fire engine is equipped to be a paramedic unit. So, you know, if we have them on a one per year, or one every other year replacement plan, it should keep the, the inventory up to date.
And what's the oldest, the oldest monitor you have now in service?
I think we just did the inventory the other day, and I think it was thirteen years old. They get updates and stuff, they, they won't hurt anybody, I promise.
I have a couple of follow-ups. The, you, you made an interesting point to show that while contractually, the city workers get a, an increase in wages, but the increase in wages doesn't correlate to the vacation relief and the overtime for EMS, and so that the figures have remained the same for a number of years. And the guys make more money, but yet you're left with the same figures year after year without an increase. I, I don't understand how the mayor's department and the board of finance department don't address that, because when you run short, then you got to steal monies from somewhere else. And you guys come in pretty flat every year, it doesn't leave you a lot to be, to get monies from other accounts. So, I mean, even, you know, I'm not even looking at a retroactive two and a half percent. If I just simply added a two and a half percent to what we have here right now, just that vacation and relief would be about, let's see, about maybe sixteen thousand dollars in and around, that, that amount. I mean, it's, it's because, I don't, I don't, I don't understand why they haven't addressed this. And in addition to that, the, the overtime for the EMS, it looks like that could be somewhere around five thousand, so, I mean, the total amount there, and again, these are contractual, would be twenty-one thousand dollars, and, you know, you don't have a choice there. This is what the pay is, and so, the overtime for these, and, which is pretty much standard, it goes straight across the board, every year you show it, so you just end up with twenty-one thousand dollars short and go find it somewhere else. I don't understand that. And then just one other thing, and maybe you can respond to this, is, I know that the overtime in the EMS is an account that's supplemented by the, it may be supplemented by the, the EMS billing. So, for example, for a, a long time, the private ambulance service would transport the patients, and then collect the insurance money, and they were making a lot of money on that. And so, eventually, the fire department stepped up and said, you know, we can transport and bring a lot of money back to the city. I'm not sure how much, but, you know, it could be millions, a million, but, but it was a substantial amount of money. But it also required that the union kind of be acceptable to do, and it was a change in, of work. Now, you've got the guys buggy lugging everybody around in, in the rescue truck, doing a lot more work, but we're also getting that money from the insurance companies that would have normally just gone to the, to the private ambulance service. So, with that being said, I think that maybe there was some type of negotiations with the fire department and with the city, in the hopes that, you know, the and with the city, in the hopes that, you know, the union would say, "Okay, let's, we'll do this, and we know that it's a good thing to do, we'll make the city money." But I think they were going to give the fire department maybe a little bit of monies from those proceeds to help upgrade some of the things that you needed to maybe upgrade in the fire department. And so I don't think that that money there should be earmarked for paying wages that are going, that are contractual. Because, I mean, now you've just taken what was, what I thought originally to be something that may be helping some of the improvements in the fire department while keeping the budget down, but also, you know, not having to pay wages out of it. So if you could, could you just help fill in the blanks for me on those? And if I said too many things at once, then just let me know. But basically, should we be using that account?
Well, thank you, and I agree, and I appreciate it. Yeah, we probably should see an increase in our wages, contractual dollar amount, whatever it is here. We did negotiate with the city. We do have a portion of the money. We're still, we're negotiating. I need a little bit more, so we're negotiating that, a little bit of an increase. But yes, so that money that is coming in, we're putting it right back into the, and Chief Wasmere can speak next, but on those stretchers, the power-load stretchers and the systems to put them into the ambulances. This board here, Chief Begley went in front of you a couple of months ago, for a lease program, which we appreciated, similar to what Public Works has. And through this money, we have, we bought an ambulance. And it's successful. It's, instead of upfront, it's three-year lease. So we're paying three years. We have a brand-new ambulance. And we'll do it again, and we don't have to purchase one right upfront for two hundred and fifty thousand or put them into the capital plan along with the fire trucks. So, yes, I appreciate you recognizing that, but there is a portion, and we're using it.
Yeah, but like for this year, if I said just the two and a half percent in the overtime for the EMS, we're taking funds out of that account, that Fund Seventy-Six EMS billing account, and we're putting it into the overtime. It's, you know, to me, that doesn't seem what that money was earmarked for. So instead of us addressing both of these accounts and saying, "There's a two and a half percent raise for salaries, which means that the overtime is going to be more," that we need to add a two and a half percent to last year's to make sure that we have basically fulfilled our obligation for those two accounts. And we haven't done that in years. So I just don't think it's fair to take it out of the Fund Seventy-Six account, when I don't believe it was earmarked, to be for wages. But it seems that you're twenty-one thousand dollars short, at least not retro, but just for this year, for those two accounts. And, you know, that, to come in with a thirty thousand, little less than thirty-one thousand dollars out of, you know, a twelve million dollar budget is really commendable, Chief, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
One of the other things you mentioned was the union negotiated higher stipends for being EMTs, maintaining their EMT, maintaining their paramedic with medical control and working on the transporting units. So if you look under fringe benefits, the educational supplement there, that is, I believe, short in the budget for what we actually pay out also. That wasn't adjusted. It's the first one under fringe benefits under wages. It's five-one-nine-nine-three-nine.
So what you're saying, again, the stipend is you're looking to cover those stipends, which would have been the three hundred and forty-five thousand. That's contractual. And we're still at the, you know, the two hundred and twenty-five thousand. That's been the perennial every year, without really addressing the increase. And so, you know, it bothers me when I see things like this. I mean, because we're really like, well, besides your own budget going over it, then you go over it with the mayor, then you go over it with the finance board, then you go over it again with us. And so, you know, it's like, I don't understand why it's not addressed. Because to me, it just seems like it's, we're not paying our fair share, and then you're just going to come back for a transfer later in the year to try to steal money from another account that's been flat for a number of years to begin with. So anyway, I appreciate your being honest and coming in with a budget that is very reasonable. And I certainly would like to see these things increased, just because they're contractual wage agreements that have been made. You're not asking for anything more than what the city has already agreed to give. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Tranquilli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Good evening, chiefs. Is there currently any contractual agreement or language that says we have to have a certain number of firemen on per shift?
Yes, there's per shift. There are twenty-five firefighters on duty per shift, four shifts.
And just a follow-up, if I can. Is there any unfilled positions currently, and are you looking to hire any new positions?
There are two vacancies currently. I might back up and say there are four vacancies currently, but two candidates are at the recruit school in Hartford. So, yes, there'll be two vacancies. And there's a retirement that came into my office this week for June. So there'll be three by July one.
So you're not looking to hire any new positions, or to replace those?
The next hiring cycle would be in August. The state runs the fire recruit class two times a year. And in August, we'll determine that. Again, at this point, there's a spending freeze, higher freeze in place. So we hope after July one, and a new budget is set, that we can loosen the reins on the spending control measures and then maybe hire.
Thank you.
Alderman Germain.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I don't know if it should be to Chief Edo or the mayor. Can you just share with the numbers, if you know roughly, on the revised budget due to the union negotiating settlements? Do you know a rough number, how much it might increase?
Mr. Chairman, through you, to Alderman Germain. It should be a slight reduction. Again, there's one fewer positions overall. So I think we're going to, out of all the sworn firefighters, going from one hundred and thirteen to one hundred and twelve. Is that fair, Chief?
That's correct.
And there's a couple of adjustments to positions. So there is going to be, one firefighter position is going to transfer over to a, to the inspector's office, the fire marshal's office. And that is a revenue-generating position to some degree, because there are fees associated with inspections. There are also going to be new lieutenant designations as well. So there's going to be the reduction of one position, but a couple of different adjustments in terms of titles or in job descriptions.
So overall reduction, not an increase?
There should be an overall budgetary slight reduction in the fire department. It's essentially a budget-neutral agreement that the city and the collective bargaining unit made. It would be slight, if anything.
Thank you.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, gentlemen, and thank you for your services. Chief Edo, you had indicated the fact that because of whatever circumstances you're outsourcing truck repair at this particular point in time. Is that more cost-effective? And do you feel as though you're going to continue that, or you're just going to bring it back after this?
No, we feel that it will be cost-effective in the long run. We've come to find out that we were sending out most of the work, anyway, most of the major work. Typically today, you know, the fire truck that's built today, and somebody said today with cars and the computer, oh, it was Peter, I think it was you. The fire truck, same thing, with the technology and the computers on them. It's not just doing an oil change and a brake job on a car. Even fifty years ago, when the shop was doing that, changing the oil and the filters and doing the brake job, with these air brakes and these trucks and the weights, typically, everything's going out anyway. So we were sending out work, and we were paying two mechanics. So I think financially...
So as I understand it, that will be a permanent kind of thing? That it'll be outsourced, and we will do away with the in-house mechanics?
That's correct.
Thank you. It must be very frustrating for you, and anybody who comes here with a department, especially with the amount of money you need, and to know that, you know, one account gets cut by three thousand, thirty, three thousand five hundred dollars or a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And you put, I would imagine, and I am sure you do, put a lot of thought process into this budget before it comes to us, and you go to the mayor, you go to the finance board, and then you come to us, and you repeat and repetitive and repeat and repeat. And a lot of things are undressed. You hear the rhetoric, you hear the pontificating. But, you know, it is all going to boil down to either pay now or pay later. And I don't think that should hinder you as far as what you do and how you do it. But it'll be interesting to find out, when this comes to a vote, as to who makes the recommendations and the amendments to increase this budget to what is needed for you to run an efficient department. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Alderman BD.
Was that a question, or are we on campaign speech? Because I asked, excuse me, I asked Chief Edo, thank you, Mr. Chairperson, to the chiefs, directly, a perfect segue to ask, "Is there anything else? Are you being short-changed? Does the revenue stream that you explained to us with the ambulance, et cetera?" My understanding is, number one, that the job freeze does not affect contractually-required positions, such as the number of personnel to a truck. The fact that the number is lower is because of some reorganization and rearrangement so that there was less need when somebody moved over to a new position, not because the contractual agreement for safety for the number of personnel on a truck was cut because of the freeze. So there's a couple of mixed-up things here. Could you clarify for me, so we don't make it? This is not a discussion of anything, but you as the chief telling us what you need. If you don't ask, and if it's not clear and loud, we don't know. And that is always my suggestion, what's for next year? What's the impact? What's the strategic plan? So when we vote, I have no idea, other than what I ask deliberately, I see the numbers, are you, is that money missing? Do you need it for EMS operations? Do you need, we see the cut. And the answer is why? So we can be clear, so we know who we're voting on. So I don't want words put in my mouth of what we're saying about the budget. Chief Edo, what do you need? Is, does this disadvantage your department? I understood you to say it did not.
You know, like I said, the five years we've been here, we've, and as transparent as can be, and the mayor's the boss. He's our boss, and he says neutral budget and flat. And we negotiate, you'll see some high numbers in here, and we negotiate, saying, "No, that's not reasonable," you know, and I get it, it's a negotiation. But we always want to do the right thing for the city, and I believe we do. We struggle, Alderman Vitale's asked me a number of times here, "Is it enough? Can you make ends meet?" And I tell him, "Yeah, you know, it's a challenge. We can do it." And we did struggle. So what I'm saying today, yeah, okay, five years into it, maybe we don't, maybe we shouldn't struggle. Maybe we don't deserve to struggle. We're a Class One Fire Department. There's only three in the state of Connecticut, two hundred in the country. We have the best paramedics in the state. We run an ambulance service that is making some money for the city. Yes, we're getting a part of it. We're making it work. It may not be enough, but we're making it work. In negotiation with the mayor to try to get a little more. The wage accounts, I've addressed it a number of times, and it's almost where it should be, regular wages. It's twelve thousand dollars short. If you compounded the two and a half for the five years and the two-point-eight. But the other accounts, I'm telling you tonight, are short. Now, I could just have gone and not put any thought into preparing a budget and just got a calculator and went two-point-five or... Would I raise the, is it two percent raise maybe this year? I could have gone two percent to every count, just did the math, and said, "This is what I want." But we're reasonable, and we're looking out for the best for the city and the best for the fire department. Doesn't affect safety or manpower. I do ask for trucks, and we've gotten trucks almost every year through the capital. But this year, we did not. I asked for any ambulance and a car, a command car, for the battalion chief. We thought out of the box, like we're getting told here all the time, and we bought an ambulance and your help through the leasing program. We didn't get the car, but in June, there's money that gets released for vehicles. It's not enough. I'm going to have to go to another department and say, "I need to borrow some of your money." We added money in this account for a car and for communications equipment. So it's in there. This year, again, at the board of finance, maybe the chairman, I don't know, Joe, he says, "Chief, it looks like you're nickel and diamond here. You're nickel and diamond, every little count, every little bit here, a little bit here." Well, I am, because I'm short. And, yeah, we did the right thing, but five years into it, yeah, we're short. We're making it work, operational, you know, you got to buy toilet paper. You got to buy uniforms, you got to buy gear. The contractual stuff is all there. We're making it work. But I am, I think I asked you tonight that I need some help in the regular wages. And I'm sorry, in the wage accounts. Now, what you do with that information? Alderman Vecchirelli, appreciate your comments. We are doing the right thing. But it's tough. Right now, I have a spending freeze. I had a, I have a budget that you approved last year. Nine months into it, we have to stop. We have the spending control. So I don't have a twelve-year budget, twelve-month budget, only nine months. Having said that, I'm still purchasing stuff. It still goes through the mayor's office. It's a little bit slower. But we are still getting purchases done. I can't make any transfers. We spoke of transfers, but, you know, at the end of the year, in August, I may have to go in front of the board of finance again. And they're going to say, "Chief, you know, you come here every year now. You're always short." Well, that's why I'm short. I told you that. I could tell you that I'm short in educational supplement, because I know how many guys I have, and what I have to pay them for their college degrees, how many paramedics, how many EMTs. I need this much. Knock them out, and you're good. So I think I said that tonight. I'm not the best speaker. Take the information and... Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chief. Any more questions regarding the fire department? Alderman Genotazio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Good evening, Chief Edo. And thank you for, you know, doing the right thing. I know that you've been, you know, loyal to the city, to the citizens, and protecting them. I just wanted to ask you, I know that I under-recognize the hardship that you're going through with the overtime accounts. It's clear, and your message is loud and clear. And we're here to assist you in any way. You've mentioned twice already about the EMS funding. And I don't even know what the percentage is. Does the fire department get the lion's share of that? Does the fire department get the lion's share of that funding or that revenue or is it the city?
No, the city does. We, of all the money collected, we get 25%, but it's capped at $500,000.
Okay, and we know that you're obviously out there generating the revenue. So with that being said, and you also mentioned the fact that you are renegotiating with the city, is that what prompted the renegotiation? Was the hardship with, you know, not being able to fund these accounts?
Yeah, typically every time, every year when we present the budget, say, you know, we need a little more coming back to us. And it's, and again, as Chief Osment says, it's just, it's going right back into the system. It's a system. It's an EMS system. It's the trucks, it's the stretchers, it's the gear, it's the monitors. How much, how much is an 12 lead monitor now?
So in order to provide the services, you obviously, in order to provide that service, it's putting a strain on your resources and I recognize that. So I hope that maybe Mayor Blake, you know, is able to give you a favorable increase on that revenue. I mean, it's well deserved, you are, you know, generating that revenue for the city and, you know, it is a partnership and I think maybe it's time for the city to step up and, you know, alleviate some of the pressure that you're under right now. So I just wanted to make that point and I appreciate everything that you said. I just want you to know it's going to go a long way and, you know, feel free to contact us if anything else should come up in the meantime. Thank you.
Well, thank you. If there's anything, any additional information or numbers or something that you need, just, you know, always get ahold of us and we'll, additionally, in the Fire Marshal's Office too, we talked about the inspectors, this is the first year we initiated a fee schedule. We're catching up with every other Fire Marshal's Office in the state of Connecticut. We hadn't done that at all and right out of the gate, we're averaging $7,000 a month just from the fire inspectors. So we're going out there doing inspections and re-inspections. So it's working, the system's working. That goes to the general.
Alderman Vekarelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to remind the board that the mayor's made the decision, the finance board has made the decision and now the decision lies up to us. And for us to give the fire department any kind of, even if a $1 increase, it will take a super majority of this board. We're 15 of us, it'll take 10 people, 10 aldermen voting in favor to increase their budget. And I think that we pretty much here tonight can agree that there really does need to be an increase in a couple of the accounts to address the shortfalls. But yeah, so again, it's going to fall to this board to whether or not they see fit to increase this fire department budget. Thank you.
Any more questions regarding the fire department? Seeing none, we'll move on to lights, hydrants and water, page 62.
So typically here, are you going to stay on this one? Lights, hydrants, lights and hydrants?
Yes.
Yeah.
Lights, hydrants and water. Anybody on the board have any questions regarding lights, hydrants or water? Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To you, chief. Quick math, how many hydrants do we have?
1,750.
And how many lights?
I would ask Chris Saley that. Typically in this section, I always, I say Peter would answer that, but I believe 1,750 for hydrants and then the lights.
1,750.
Yes.
Was an interesting number that I was, just wanted to hear about. Thanks.
Any more questions regarding lights, hydrants or water? Alderman Tranquilli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. This is in regards to a question about the lighting. I'm not sure if I should ask the mayor or is that, okay. Mayor Blake, I think if I can remember correctly, last year we were at 795,000. This board voted to cut 100,000 off lighting. So currently there was 730, which was proposed by the finance board or actually by your recommendation and by the finance board. Why are we asking for more when we should, we should be, we should have saved on the LED lighting and currently what is, what is the current cost to date for our lighting? If you could, somewhere, if you can answer that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, through you, Alderman Tranquilli. As you see, last year, again, we did not have a full year's worth of experience with the LED, but we did go over the budgeted amount pretty significantly. We had to do a transfer that went through your board, but we were over significantly. Now with a full year's of experience, we are saving money and on top of that, we've just recently renegotiated the generation costs for our streetlights. So in addition to having the LED which draws less, we actually also have a better generation rate. Even still though, this number is tight. I am hopeful that we will not go over that number, but even with those two additional cost savers, the amount that we reduced the budget by a year ago makes this budget figure very tight. So we're right there for the streetlights and I would recommend that we go with the 730.
If I can just follow up, Mr. Chairman. So do we currently rent the LED lights from the UI company? And if we do, is that why the cost went up? And what did the cost, what did it cost to the city to actually install all of the lights? If we're, we should have all of them replaced at this point, I think you said, right?
Mr. Chairman, through you, we do rent all towns within the UI district except for the city of New Haven, rent the fixtures from UI. There are some decorative lamps and some decorative lamps, for example, the ones along South Broad Street and North Broad Street that the city owns, but all of the Cobra Head lights and the lights from the Light the Night program are rented from the UI company. Almost all the towns within UI's district except for New Haven go under that same rental process. New Haven, from what I've heard anecdotally, is actually trying to sell back their streetlights to the UI company just because UI has the expertise and the manpower to maintain those. And in terms of the second part of your question, what is the cost for installation of new streetlights? It depends, it depends on the wattage of the light and it depends on, you know, what type of color temperature it is as well, but, you know, generally each light could be several hundred dollars each per year, up to, you know, $1,500 depending on the wattage of the light.
But can Mr. Chairman ask one more question? So if at all possible, I know you probably can't give it to us tonight, can we get the numbers to where we're at up until, I don't know if you can do up to April or March, where we're at, total cost for the, for the year before we vote?
I can get you the numbers up to the most recent billing cycle, sure.
Thank you.
Any more questions regarding?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I believe I can give an answer to that question to the alderman. As of now, we have spent $477,760 fiscal year to date.
Thank you, Peter. Any more questions regarding lights, hydrants and water? Seeing none, we'll move on to emergency management, page 58. Any more questions regarding emergency management? Seeing none, we'll move on to the last one for our fire department, C-MED, page 88. Anyone having any questions for C-MED? I see none. Thank you very much, chief, for answering all our questions.
Thank you all.
And thank you for all your creative budgeting. The next department on our agenda this evening is the Historic District Commission, page Anyone having any questions regarding the Historic District Commission? Sure, I'm sure the mayor could answer that for us. I see none. We'll move on to the next department, Historic District Number Two, page 91. Anyone having any questions pertaining to Historic District Number Two? Seeing none, we'll move on to Milford Progress Incorporated, page 91. Anyone having any questions for Milford Progress? Alderman Gorman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, to, I don't know who's speaking on their behalf or if the mayor's going to, but my question is, the new planters that were thrown around downtown, what is going on with that and who's going to be maintaining that, planting that? Or is it the city's responsibility? Is it people that it's in front of or is it the chamber? Who's going to be taking care of those and are they all going to be consistently the same?
Mr. Chairman, through you, it's my understanding that Public Works is working in conjunction or in partnership with Milford Progress on that project. The planters and the decorative trees were initially purchased through Milford Progress and there's going to be continued maintenance through Milford Progress and the city's Public Works Department. I know that there has already, or it's my understanding that there's already been some bulbs that should be breaking through, but again, that's what I have heard, that there's also some additional plantings that as the spring progresses, we should see some new flowers out of those planters.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, and Mr. Mayor. I'm kind of disappointed in those planters. They look like, I don't know what they look like. I mean, you go into other cities and New Haven, you go down to New Haven and you see planters that have the logo or the city crest on it and significant presence are just, with the artificial trees in there, they don't look too good anyway. Christmas is over. But the issue is, I was looking for maybe a larger kind of thing and my concern is in front of Founder's Walk, I've seen on several occasions, cars just go down the curb cut, just as though, until they get to the staircase and they say, oh, it's not a road. I don't know why we just can't have some really large planters right near the sidewalk so cars can't even attempt to make that, can't even attempt to make that turn. But, you know, it's, I like the idea. I know that they were probably put out a little too early because we had a snowstorm or some plows and they got destroyed and whatever, but I just thought they could have been more decorative and more colorful in the city and to me, they're insignificant and I just, I don't know if we can do anything about it. I know a couple of years ago, the Milford Progress, a few years ago, Milford Progress had a real big contingency fund and we kind of backed that down to about $1. I think it was my amendment, but the issue is that, you know, if they have the money to do something that is significant, why not let it look significant? They're too small, I think. I just don't think they have a presence. That's my opinion, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alderman Vitale. I will share those thoughts with Milford Progress to see if we can boost up the aesthetics of those planters in terms of the position of planters in front of Founder's Walk from a sightline point of view, from a ADA accessibility point of view. I'm not sure if they can be moved, but I will take a look at that or have our departments take a look at that. But certainly from an aesthetic point of view, I will share those concerns with Milford Progress to see what they have in mind for enhancing the planters.
And I can see what you're saying because there is an interference because they have two planters right by the railings going down the pathway and it could be an ADA interference there, but I'm talking about planters more to the sidewalk side so vehicles can really see that it's really not a thoroughfare. And, you know, I think that would help, but on several occasions, I've seen cars take a turn into that, into that area. So if that could be, I'd like to see, you know, two, three foot planters. I mean, they're all over other cities and again, they're ceramic in a way and they're colorful, but there's, there's nothing appeasing any aesthetic consciousness of any, anybody in the city. I just, you know, they're very bland. Thank you.
Any more questions regarding Milford Progress? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next department, which is Public Debt Service, page 78. Anyone having any questions pertaining to public debt service? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next department, Insurance and Bonds. I'm sorry, the next one is the employee benefits. I skipped one. Anyone having any questions pertaining to employee benefits? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next department, Insurance and Bonds. Anyone having any questions pertaining to insurance and bonds? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next department, Claims and Refunds. Does anyone have any questions regarding claims and refunds? Seeing none, we'll move on to Benefit and Salary Reserve, page 106. Anyone having any questions pertaining to Benefit and Salary Reserve? Seeing none, we'll move on to Private School Textbook, page 92. Anyone having any questions pertaining to Private School Textbook? I got page 92 in my book.
It's 93, the top of 93.
It's on 93, I'll correct my page here. Yeah, mine said 92 as well. Anyone having any questions pertaining to Private School Textbook? Alderman Vekarelli. Alderman Veccharelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, to you, to maybe the, the mayor. Mr. Mayor, the, I know we've had, uh, several schools close in the past, and, um, has this figure been a constant figure, like, over the years, even though the schools have been closing?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Veccharelli, yes, that figure has not changed. It has not increased, you know, with inflation. But at the same time, uh, there have been some private schools in town that have closed down. Uh, there is the argument, though, that some of those students from either St. Gabe's or St. Anne's, uh, then transferred over to, uh, St. Mary's, for example. But, um, so that there is, uh, to some degree, a, a static line item there that has not increased or decreased, at least for, I think, the last 10 years.
Is there, is there just one school now that's getting this?
I believe so.
Any more questions pertaining to private school textbook? Seeing none, we'll move on to Unallocated Contingency, page 106.
Mr. Chairman, if I may interject, um, the page numbers are correct. These accounts are in the sewer fund, but you probably want to take a glance at the account, similar accounts in the general fund, and those are on different page numbers?
Page 86.
Thank you, Peter. Alderman Vitale.
Just a question to you, Peter, or the mayor. So the unallocated contingency on 106, where it had zero, is that just duplicated? Or how do you, what's the explanation for that on 106 as opposed to 86?
Uh, the 106 relates to the sewer fund, I believe, and the unallocated contingency on page 86 is for the general fund.
I do. I stand corrected. Thank you.
Anyone having any questions requiring, uh, unallocated contingency on 86? Seeing none, we'll move on to Education Audit Fees, page 93. Anyone having any questions regarding education audit fees? Alderman Smith.
Just a quick question. Maybe I ask this every year. Why isn't education audit fees in this, in the school district budget, not in the city
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Alderman Smith. Uh, the, the audit is conducted on the city side, but our independent auditors also have to audit the Board of Education. So when we get the total bill, we have to allocate a portion and classify it as an education-type expense. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Peter. Any questions regarding education audit fees? Seeing none, we'll move on to School Debt, page 93. Anyone having any questions regarding school debt? Seeing none, we'll move on to Employee Benefits, Non Teaching, page 93. Anyone having any questions regarding employee benefits, Non Teaching, on page 93?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Mayor.
I do wanna just draw your attention to, uh, under Education Employee Benefits, Teacher Retirement Contribution. There has been a lot of discussion at the state level, um, regarding a possible municipal contribution to this state teacher's retirement benefits. Um, the state has not finalized that yet. Uh, we don't know how the city would either pay or lose state grant money. Uh, so we put a dollar figure there as a placeholder, uh, on the off-chance that there is going to be some allocation or expectation that municipalities like Milford have to pay a portion, uh, towards that liability.
So that just keeps the account open in, in the, in, just in case? Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Alderman Veccharelli.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, through you, to the mayor, um, is it possible that that could be like $1.5 million?
Uh, under the governor's proposed budget, for the next fiscal year, it does jump up to a number approaching that.
Do you have any idea what it might be this year for this budget?
I believe that this year, uh, the impact, the total impact, uh, for Milford in terms of lost ECS revenue and combined with the contribution towards the teacher retirement system under the administration's budget, which at this point is the only budget that's adopted, uh, I don't believe the appropriations, is it, the appropriations budget may have been approved within the last 20, 24 hours. But, um, under the initial administration budget, there was about a $700,000 impact onto Milford. Again, it's a long process for, uh, each, you know, for each general assembly cycle. So we will still wait until the final approval. There's a lot of horse trading going on up in Hartford, so we don't know what it's gonna be. But, uh, we relied upon, uh, what the governor's budget was about a month and a half ago when it came out.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To you, Mayor. Uh, again, that'll be calculated on the idea of salaries per municipality, because obviously the Gold Coast out that way will be paying more because salaries are higher, and a percentage of the retirement RTB is against the salary of the individual. So I would imagine, I don't know where we'll fall, because our salaries are kind of up there, uh, but it will be different in all municipalities, I would assume.
Mr. Chairman, my understanding is, again, uh, we'll see what happens in terms of the formula that is finally adopted. But under the governor's budget, there was a formula, uh, that had all different towns and cities paying a different amount. One of the many factors in this formula was, uh, the amounts over the average teacher salary. Uh, so I think Milford was above the average teacher salary, so there would be a little bit of a cost adjustment because of that. But again, until the final budget is adopted up in Hartford, we, we will not know our final figure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The last, last on our agenda is Education Health Insurance Contribution, page 94. Does anybody have any questions regarding education health insurance contribution? Alderman Vitale.
Uh, just a point of information, as, as to Alderman Smith's point when, um, was asked, how come the auditing is not accrued or, or charged to the Board of Education? If we took, if we took the educational audit fees of $22,000-plus, school debt of $5,000,000-plus, employee benefits of $1,000,000-plus, education health contribution of $20,000,000-plus, plus the RNs at $1,000,000-plus, and add it to the $95,000,000 operating budget of the Board of Education, the total ancillary, but all of the added costs to the city, is an outrageous amount of money. It'd be interesting for you to add that up and add it to the $95 million and see what the total educational budget is in the city. And at the point at which it's 22, 23 mil, 22, $23,000 per pupil expenditure. Thank you.
Any more questions regarding education health insurance contributions? Seeing none, is there a motion to recess to the next budget meeting on May 8th?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second to recess to the next budget meeting, eight, May 8th. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're in recess. Thank you.